Good evening, everyone. We're a little late, but this is the October 29th meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? We're going to start off this meeting before our roll call by offering a moment of silence. Over this past week, there was a horrible tragedy in the city of Pittsburgh, and our thoughts are with them during this very difficult time, and I think this is a terrible, terrible tragedy that the entire country mourns with them. So I offer a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Roll call of the members, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe is absent. Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo?
Yep.
Here, Councilor Rotendo?
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino. Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 24th.
So moved.
Calendar item number three, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 22nd.
So moved.
Calendar item number four, that was actually going to be rescheduled, Council President, for next Monday? Yes. Perfect. This time, can I ask for suspension of rules? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. We have the Chief of Police here, and there are several items that I'd like to take out of order. I'd like to start with calendar item number 18. Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Councilor Rizzo that the mayor requests the Chief of Police to brief the City Council on school safety preparedness and what measures have been taken to identify and combat acts of violence should a response be required. Thank you, Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I submitted a similar motion close to a year ago. It seems as though, you know, just when you think it can't get worse, it does. And, you know, we just want to be sure that the City Council is up to speed on what measures are being taken in the school system so that teachers and obviously students, paraprofessionals, administrators are well-prepared, at least as prepared as they can be in response to something like this, and to also learn where the Revere Police Department is with respect to their level of preparedness. For whatever reason, I was told that they were going to make a presentation to the School Committee, which is great, we are a completely separate body than the School Committee. So I wanted to submit the motion again, where at least six months has gone by, to see if we can get a presentation that would bring us up to speed and have a certain level of comfort to know that our over 7,000 students across the city are protected, are at least being thought of with respect to public safety. And I know I've received calls from some residents that have had incidents where they were allowed into the school without proper credentialing and things that, you know, in one case, doors were left open. I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly, you know, what the policies and procedures are, but again, how would I, because we haven't been, we haven't been briefed. So if this is something that would be better suited because of the, because of the nature of the request, that it be done in subcommittee or not televised, I'm okay with that, because there might be sensitive information shared. I just want to know, as a City Councilor, and I would imagine my colleagues would as well, to know that there are drills being held in the various schools across the city to help make sure that people know what to do in the event of one of these one-off psychotic shooters or whatever that may enter one of our schools. We have to be prepared. It's the world we live in, and I just want to know as one City Councilor that that work is being done. So that's the reason for the motion, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Rizzo. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I just want to start by saying, Councilor Rizzo, I think that this would be a great motion to put into public safety, and perhaps we could invite the School Committee to attend that meeting as our guests of the council. We can televise it. And again, as you mentioned, I think it was great that if there are things that are sensitive, perhaps if we have to hold separate, untelevised meeting to discuss any sensitive issues with the Superintendent, we can absolutely do that as well, but I think it would be great to hold that subcommittee in public safety and invite School Committee and Superintendent.
Madam President, can I suggest that we invite the Resource Officer as well?
Of course. And the Chief or any other law enforcement. Councilor Rizzo, are you comfortable with that recommendation?
Absolutely.
Perfect. All right, I'm going to ask any councilors, again, keeping in mind we will have a subsequent meeting on this. Councilor Rotendo?
Thank you. Through you to the Chief, actually first, I want to kind of back up. Perhaps some of this information should be shared in executive session, considering the sensitivity of it, and more importantly, it might involve deployment and response. So I think that's something that we don't want people to know, and perhaps some of it would have to go into executive session. I'm sure the Chief will tell us accordingly. But through you to the Chief, my question is going to be a little direct. How many rounds are we purchasing per year for training?
Madam President, can I speak? I'm not going to answer questions on TV, but we've had extensive training.
Point of order.
For the schools. Counselor, could I speak? Then I'll answer your question.
I believe the floor is with the councilors right now, if I'm not mistaken.
We will get you all.
And you just basically said that you're not going to answer any questions.
If you can submit all your questions, we'll bring all the answers at the subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
That's fine. So they'll be detailed.
Okay.
In pages long.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Chief, to be here to answer any questions. I understand this is sensitive, so I understand that there are things that may, again, not be appropriate for this venue, so I encourage all councilors to submit any questions to the Chief in this body, if you feel comfortable sharing with your colleagues. And the key is information, whether it's televised or not, we need the information. Counselor Novosowski?
Very quickly, Madam President, thank you. This is, you know, I thank Councilor Rizzo for putting this. It is something that should be brought to the forefront after everything that's been going on around the country, let alone what could possibly happen here. But just, you know, and Chief can confirm this, I believe there was just a recent session on preparedness in the schools for, was it bombings or something like that?
Active shooter training.
Right. Active shooter training. So I think that's something that we can bring forward to the committee meeting and just bring this up to power.
We'll have Officer Turner here.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you, Chief.
I just want the council to know that we train all the time. We take school safety very serious. We have three school resource officers presently. We hope to expand that as we hire more officers. When I became Chief, I put Captain O'Hara in charge of community services and the school police, and we have constant communication with the School Department on a daily basis. We're constantly doing training. We just finished active shooter training for the whole Police Department at the school in conjunction with the Fire Department. We're well ahead of a lot of the communities around us for training, not only for schools, for any type of incident that may occur. We have a fully operational SWAT team. They train on a weekly basis. It's costly, but it's necessary. And we have been doing a lot of interaction with the youth, because they're our best resource if someone's going to cause a problem in the schools. And we've done that through half-day hoops, the Youth Academy, the Power League. We're constantly trying to have interaction and build a rapport with the students, not only in the high school, but in the entire school system. So as far as Councilor Rotendo's question, I don't know exactly how many rounds of ammunition we buy, but we do qualification twice a year. The whole department goes to the range twice a year, and the SWAT team does more extensive training in shooting. So I wasn't trying to be rude, but I don't have the exact number of rounds that we buy per year.
To that point, having several friends that are currently within the military and actually within various, let's just say, government agencies, the major issue is, is the ability to, you know, train, and part of that training is rounds, and the more rounds you train with, the higher skill set you have, more importantly, the higher shot shooters skills that you have. So I'll send you a nice big letter.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, councilors. This will be going to public safety, and I'm going to ask the clerk to invite the School Committee and Superintendent to that meeting. Thank you. Calendar item 19. Motion presented by Councilor Rizzo that the mayor instruct the Chief of Police to appear before the City Council to discuss policies and procedures pertaining to officers currently enlisted in the armed forces and being deployed. Counselor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just want to be sure that any of our police officers who are still under obligation with United States military are able, and I just want clarification and confirmation of this, that they're able to serve out their duty to the country without any negative ramifications pertaining to their police service here in the city of Revere. We should be grateful to these veterans that have not only served, but continue to serve, and not only served the community as a police officer, but served the country in their capacity as a soldier, or a sailor, or an airman. And I just want to be sure that all of that is going as smoothly as it can, and that we are, as a body, making sure that our veterans are, you know, well taken care of and well thought of during, before, and after their deployment, and whatever ramifications it might leave on the Revere Police Department, whether it lead to more overtime or whatever the case is. This is, this all comes, this is federal law when they're under their military obligation. So I just want to be sure that all that is. The reason for the motion, quite honestly, Madam President, is I've been hearing, and again, I'm not going to say that I'm hearing anything firsthand, but I'm hearing that there might, it might be, you know, some glitches within the department. I want to make sure that, that there is none, that everybody that is involved in active military duty is, is being treated the same as any other officer would, and with the same level of respect.
Thank you, Councilor Rizzo. We have the Chief here to answer some questions. I'm going to ask any other councilors if they have any questions, and then he can address us, and if there's ample questions, we'll send it to committee. If there's several that we can take up tonight, we'll just deal with them as they come. Counselor Morabito?
I just want to commend Councilor Rizzo on, you know, taking the initiative of putting in these motions. You know, we get motions from constituents throughout the city with concerns, and he wants to put rumors to rest, and I appreciate that the Chief came here, even before this was, motion was ordered by the mayor, you came here and did the due diligence of giving us the respect in answering questions, so thank you. That means a lot.
Thank you, Steve. Counselor Novosowski?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, you know, it's good to review things. I haven't heard anything that's going on, but I would like to add the Fire Department on this also, because I think this is more of a general thing rather than targeting the Police Department. But, you know, it's not only the fire, but, you know, when you look at it, even some of our city employees, you know, guys that may be working, or gals that may be working for Public Works. So, you know, I think we ought to be brought up to date, even, you know, if we get put in committee and the Veterans Committee and bring up our Veteran Service Officer and, you know, talk about it then. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, I don't have a problem with what Councilor Novosowski's referring to, and, but I think I'm more into what Councilor Morabito had said, and that is, you know, that there are some things being said out there, and I just want clarification that all of these officers who are currently enrolled in, whether it be active duty, or reserve duty, or National Guard, whatever their status is, that, that there's no negative ramifications on the level of their service within the department, either before they leave for active duty service or when they return. I just want to make sure that's the case. And, you know, if it, if I heard something within the Fire Department, I probably would have said, "Fire Department, if I heard something in Public Works," I probably would have asked that. In this case, I did not hear that. So that's the only reason I didn't, but I agree with the concept, anybody involved, anybody that is, you know, placed on active duty during their time of employment with the city of Revere ought to be able to carry out their duties without being worried about their job here in the city. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. At this time, I think that it would be appropriate to send this to Public Works, and if any councilors have any other questions, or want to address Public Works Department, or Fire Department, or any other city employees that this may affect, we can discuss it at that time.
Madam President, if I may, can we put it in a Veterans Committee? Because I don't think it's directly related to Public Works. We do have a Veterans Committee, I believe, on the council.
That would be more appropriate, Counselor. I agree. So we'll send it to Veterans.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Madam President, can I speak, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. As you know, I've been the Chief for approximately 18 months, and when I became the Chief, military leave was a huge issue. Basically, it was being abused, and no one supports veterans more than myself. I worked with Councilor Novoselsky long before I was Chief. We changed the city ordinance because there was a loophole in it. But basically, the definition of active duty for pay is you need to be at war. We have people on the department who do a great job. Many, there's probably 10 to 15 officers who are still in the National Guard, temporary military service. So what was happening is, they were enhancing their career and signing up for training, and they would bring orders down that they were going to the military for training, and they wanted to get the pay from the city and the pay from the military. It was basically voluntary to enhance their career and to move up in the ranks of the military, their pay status. The contract and the law is very clear, the city's obligation and the department's obligation. It was leaving the department short-staffed. It was costing a lot of money in overtime, and it was forcing officers to be forced to work because we were so shorthanded. Basically, the city's policy now, and it worked with John Viarella, and we fine-tuned it, we've been in touch with the government liaison for the military and the city, and the policy basically is just what's in the contract. Officers who go on their two weeks annual training are allowed up to 17 days off with pay to go to that training. Any other training they go to, go to, or their weekend drills, is on their own time. Some officers have gone to training, and they're on unpaid leave now. They chose to go and advance their career in the military, and they've been allowed to leave on unpaid leave. Any officer who's called to active duty, and I'll give you the definition, the city ordinance that this council created, it basically says, "Called to active duty is defined as being deployed for military duty for a minimum period of nine months and out of the continental United States, including territories of Hawaii and Alaska." So the ordinance was meant for officers who were called up to active duty in a time of war and not to have unlimited training at the city's expense and at the department's expense. So I'm telling, and that's one of the revisions I made. We put out a general order. The unions, met with the unions. We got, we consulted with the Military Advisor. He actually said that we, that even this policy was too generous, some of the things that I allow, but, you know, we do support the military, but it can't be open-ended, and everyone can just go and be off and be gone for six, six months, a year, two years. We have a police department to run. Right now, I have one officer who said he would be out six months on unpaid leave. He's going on another year unpaid leave, so we lost his service for a year and a half. We have another officer who's been gone almost four years. He's coming back in two weeks, because the city sent him a letter trying to find out what his status is. And I have another officer that's out on unpaid leave for 30 days at a special training. So I try to be fair to all of the officers that are in the military, but I also have a police department to run, and we don't have the luxury to allow all these officers to be off on military. We need the people in the department.
Thank you, Chief.
You heard it right from me. Everything we do is based on mass general law and federal law.
Thank you. Madam President? Counselor Rotendo?
Thank you. I'd like a copy of the actual policy and the contract. Number two, I'd like to point out something that I believe you might have misspoke about. It is outside the continental United States. It is not during time of war. Quite frankly, time of war is only declared when Congress does that. It is whenever you're deployed outside the continental United States on active duty. More importantly, you stay training. Well, I can tell you right now, guys with the 19 Special Forces Group down in Rhode Island, they get deployed overseas, but their, their language on their, on their deployment, on their paperwork is training. It never says deployment. It says training.
I understand that, Counselor.
So that's, so by doing that, you are breaking federal law.
No, we're not.
Counselor, we're not going to go into allegations. We're going to take this up in subcommittee.
Well, that's why I'm asking for the information.
Before we jump to conclusions on the council's half or the Chief's department's half.
I assure you, we're in compliance with the law, Madam President.
So I ask any councilors to have any questions they may have for the Chief of the Department prepared to submit. That way, he has all of the information he needs for the committee meeting and can answer any questions we have.
I'm writing as we speak.
Wonderful. All right, this will go to veterans as well? Oh, we're on the same motion still. Veterans. Okay. Also going to take up calendar number 23 while we're under suspension. Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Councilor Rizzo that the mayor instruct the Chief of Police to appear before the City Council to discuss the increase in crime on Broadway, Coolidge Street, and Rose Street as outlined in the October 24, 2018 edition of the Revere Journal. Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. All these public safety motions seem to just crop up in the same week, but this happens to be something that was quite alarming to me, where the Revere Journal reported on, in fact, the article's right here, "Police See Drug and Gang Activity Moving More to the Broadway Area." So, you know, we've worked for several years, obviously, trying to keep every neighborhood in the city safe. That being said, we've worked for many years trying to make Broadway-Revere our central business district a more vibrant place and certainly a safe place for people to come and spend some time and spend money. The notion of that the Police Department seeing drug and gang activity moving, as the Journal says, more toward Broadway is a little bit disturbing. And, you know, let's face it, it's one of the most highly-traveled roads in the city. It's what people traversing our city see as they go through, whether it be from the city of Boston to the North Shore and beyond. You know, I just want to get a status of what's going on. Again, I don't have a problem with this going to subcommittee. We can talk a little more at length. I don't think there's enough time, really, quite honestly, at, at this meeting, given the agenda, to spend a lot, the, the amount of time that I'd like to spend on it. But the other thing that I will say, we used to, and I haven't seen ones certainly since being on the City Council, get a annual report. That would be, that would break down crimes by areas, by types of crimes, so that I, at that time, as mayor, certainly could see where our area of focus should lie. And we, you know, we used to share that with the City Council. Every City Council would get a copy of it. I've never received one. I don't know if there's still one available or when the last time it was done. So in, certainly if there is one, I'd love to see it. Maybe one for 2017, one for 2018. That would be great, or actually, 2017, 2016. That would, that would be great to, you know, to see. But this is a concern of mine, and certainly, as you look, Coolidge Street, Rose Street, those areas are now being impacted, and I know that, you know, there's actually some residents here that may even want to speak on, on this particular motion, because it is something that has been a concern with people for quite some time in those neighborhoods as well. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be going to the Public Safety Subcommittee, so we will open time for comments during public safety. Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. This is the area I represent, and the only thing I can say about this is, I wish the Journal had given insight enough to give me a call where I represent that area and ask what my feelings are. I've had constant communication with some of the residents of that area, and one is in attendance here tonight. I've been working hand-in-hand with the Chief and with the detectives of that area. They've been nothing more than responsive to me. I've worked with Jim Melonazzo from the Revere Housing Authority. I'm getting his full cooperation. They can go down to Roosevelt Street. I look daily on the police blotter in the lin item. I get it daily. Most, a lot of the crime is occurring on Roosevelt Street in Revere, right next to the Paravere School. I'm working hand-in-hand with the, an officer who's in attendance tonight. We, we're concentrating on this area. I'm getting cooperation here. Sometimes there's incidences that really are beyond control. They're a matter of moments, and that was it, an incident occurs. But as for the peripera, I'm not getting it from several residents there. I'm getting it from a couple who are very observant and willing to come forward. And it's, and I can understand, they're in fear somewhat of their safety also. They want to be like behind the scenes and not let it be known, but this, this gentleman goes right out in the forefront. But it's to say that it's out of control and I'm not getting cooperation from the Revere Police Department, that would be unfair. I am getting cooperation from the Revere Police Department. I wish the Journal had asked me if I'm getting cooperation. You know, don't alarm people and say, "There's something going on. Some rumor that was going on that the high school is going to be there now, we're going to be displacing all these people." This foolishness has to stop. The rumor monger in Revere is absolutely the highest level anywhere you can find. Facebook and all those social media outlets are the destruction of fact. I just find it, you know, I'm insulted by this comments, because I'm working hand-in-hand with the Revere Police Department, and I'm getting their full cooperation, and they know if I didn't get it, they, they, I would be the first one to spell it out. I'd go see the mayor and have a meeting with the Chief. Right away, I'm, I'm getting cooperation, and I'm hoping that we have this somewhat under control, but these incidences where they're occurring, and if there are houses that we can go in, it's a long process, as everybody knows. And I, I want the people of the Housing Authority and Coolidge and Broadway and Rose to understand they're not really in any higher danger than they are on the people in Roosevelt Street and elsewhere within the community.
Madam President?
Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, just a point of information. This, this wasn't, and I'm not questioning the ward councilors, you know, I'm not questioning his work ethic or him getting cooperation from the police. This was, the article says, this wasn't off of social media, the article says, "In the wake of two significant arrests by the Revere Police Narcotics and Gang Unit, authorities said they have seen a shift in criminal activity from the Shirley Ave area to the Broadway area." And, you know, they, it's coming from, it's coming from our own police authority. So this wasn't something that I think, certainly not myself, and, and I'm far be it for me to defend the Revere Journal, but, you know, I don't think the, you know, the Journal wrote the story as, as it was outlined by authorities. So that's the reason that I submitted the motion, Madam President. And again, I know my colleague works hard down in his ward, and, but, and again, it's not a reflection of, of, of his work or level of cooperation. I'm more concerned of why crime is moving into those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novosowski, did you wish to speak? No? Anyone else? Public safety. Oh, yeah. Name an address for the record.
Wayne Rose, 189 Coolidge Street. I, I came to the City Council December 19th of 2016. I won, I won the council that there was guns, there was drugs, and more gang activity in this whole Broadway area, Coolidge Street especially. From what I've seen, there's less crime in that's Coolidge Street area. So for the Police Department to come out and say that the crime's on an uptick? So for the police department to come out and say that the crime's on an uptick, I don't believe it. And I'd like to see his crime stats. I would love to see the reports from 2016, when the guns were being shot all over the city, to now. So if the chief could furnish them, I greatly appreciate it.
Madam President, first, I'd like to thank Counselor Guanasso for the kind remarks. I think the Journal kind of got the story mixed up. The purpose of the interview with Lieutenant M. Pembah was to showcase some fine work we did, getting a couple of more guns off the street and some more drugs. There's no uptick of crime in the Broadway area. Couple of low-level drug dealers may have shifted from Shirley Ave because we've had such a presence down there in the past up to Broadway. And I agree with Mr. Rose. Since I became chief, every call, every complaint, I call the detectives all hours of the night, and I tell them I want this address, and we get on it. And I think we're doing a good job. The guys have been more proactive. There's been a high visibility in the projects between the sector cars and the detective bureau. So I can't help what the Journal wrote or misunderstood the purpose of the story, but there's no uptick in crime. Revere is very safe, and we do not have the gang problems like in surrounding communities. We do a great job, and we keep it under wraps. We know all the players. We constantly have them under surveillance. And as far as crime stats and the meeting, we'll have all those statistics, but everything's down except for a couple of areas. And I think we're doing very well, and the extra officers has helped immensely. And we have some more graduating the academy, and I hope to increase the gang and drug unit even further for the, I get many calls from 311, drug dealing going on in neighborhoods, and we're trying to address every complaint we get. But I want the council to know, it's a lot of work when there's drug dealing going on from the time we get the complaint till we can go through that door and make an arrest. We need the participation, the community, and everyone's involvement to make these investigations successful.
Thank you, Chief, and I look forward to seeing the information when we have our community meeting. It'll be really helpful.
Thank you.
Counselor, yeah?
Thank you. I think one of the issues to prevent this from happening again, and I know it's been brought up in the past, is to have perhaps a quarterly communication to the council as to what's taking place and how crime is, so that way we don't have to, you know, refer back to what's inaccurate. That's something that's been asked for for the past two years.
Counselor, I'm available every day.
Oh, I'm available. I call you all the time.
As far as the annual report goes, there is an annual report. It's online, just like we've done for years and years, and the new annual report's being worked on for this year.
No, no, I mean quarterly, so that we have a...
I understand what you're saying, but I wanted to address Counselor Rizzo's concern about the annual report.
Thank you, Counselors, and thank you, Chief. Again, this will be going to public safety. Name an address for the record.
Pat Milkianos, Second Street, Revere. I think it's great, Jimmy, that Chief Guido, that you've been here tonight without even having to. Thank you so much. I think the police are doing a great job. But, Mr. Guanasso, what blotter are you talking about? Because I don't see a blotter in Revere. We're only at the mercy of what's put in the Journal and... Okay, so that's my point, is that Revere really doesn't have a, doesn't put much in their blotter like Sogistas, like Lindas, like Marl... It doesn't. I'm telling you, it doesn't. I know what you're saying, the lin item. Like, a lot of towns really do put a whole bunch in their blotter, and for some reason, Revere really doesn't put a whole bunch. Do you know why? It's like, almost like they really don't want to put a whole bunch of what, I mean, I, you know, if I, I listen to the police radio, so I know everything that happens in Revere, and there's very little that's put in, forget the Journal. The Journal really doesn't put much in, but the blotter in the lin item really doesn't put a whole bunch in. And I don't know, maybe you really don't want people to know. But when you did say the blotter, it's very little compared to what other towns do. And that's my only point. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. So again, this will be going to...
Madam President, every day, all of the papers get the log from the police department. I can't control what they put in the paper, but they are allowed, all the arrests, all the calls for service, they get every single day. They're supplied with that information. And they're not, if there's no arrests, there's nothing to write, so.
That's a good thing. Thank you, Chief. Public safety. Calendar number 26.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor Rattan that the mayor request the chief of police or designee to appear before the city council to discuss the deployment and use of ShotSpotter to decrease gun violence in the city.
Thank you. Actually, this is on the behest of several people that had spoken to me about it. I know it's also been online, but this is more relative to another gentleman from, I won't say where, but he's very concerned about it because he feels that it's, quote, "not working," and I know he's watching right now, and if the chief could talk a little bit about it, that would be great.
Busy night, Chief.
I'm sure this will continue. As far as ShotSpotter goes, we're part of U.A.C. Region Urban Area Security Initiative, Homeland Security Money. We're one of nine communities. Boston, Cambridge, Brookline, Chelsea, Everett, Revere, and Winthrop. I think that's all nine of them. We started with the ShotSpotter program. It's very costly. I'm not going to go over what part of Revere has ShotSpotter, but it, we have one mile, square mile of area covered by ShotSpotter. We're still tweaking it. We don't get many hits on it. Some of them are firecrackers, some of them are backfires. There, a lot of the calls are looked at somewhere else and then forwarded to us to see if it was an actual gunshot. And actually, U.A.C., right now, we're analyzing if we even want to continue ShotSpotter. The only one who's really using it and has a huge area, and they put a lot of their own money into it, is the city of Boston. And I personally, as well as a couple of other people on my staff, don't recommend that for Revere. For the number of hits we get, it's not worth the cost, and I would rather use the money to put up more cameras if U.A.C. decides to do away with ShotSpotter. And some other cities feel the same way.
Thank you, Chief.
So, I'm not sure what Counselor Rattan was asking, but when we get a ShotSpotter activation, most of the time, if the shots are fired in the neighborhood, the neighbors are already calling us. But we also send a car to that area, whether we got a call or not.
So, Madam President?
Yep.
The question is how effective it is, and I think you've just basically answered it for the gentleman.
I think when there's actually shots fired, I would say it's 95% accurate, but there's a lot of other things that factor in, and they have to decide, was it a shot? And ShotSpotter is on the side of caution, so sometimes they'll send us false hits. So when you hear ShotSpotter went off, that doesn't automatically mean shots were fired. Welcome, Counselor.
Thank you, everyone. I don't see any need for this to go to committee, so we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. This time, we will return to the regular order of business unless there are any of the Counselors that have any special requests? No? Okay. Calendar number five.
Public hearings. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance relative to abandoned bicycles.
Any proponents here this evening?
Julie Demaro, Healthy Community Initiatives Office. This hearing, this ordinance that's put forth before you was actually brought into Legislative Affairs in April and then back again in September. It has been reworked. What you see before you is the newest version of the ordinance, which was discussed in September 24 at that meeting. Basically, I am in favor of this ordinance. It's something that we worked on. We looked at all the different scenarios and different types of bicycles that could end up here in the city. It's to create some order with personal bicycles as well as shared bicycles, and then also putting a semi-ban on any type of bicycle that has a motor or a scooter. We discussed where the bicycles can be parked, where they can't be parked, and then the process for reporting a bicycle that is abandoned, and then the retrieval process and how we go about getting that bike picked up by the company or the owner.
Thank you. Any other proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anybody opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any Counselors? And again, this will be going to the Legislative Affairs as it says an ordinance change to make any final tweaks. Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Section 17.16.060 of the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to townhouses in the RB, RB1, CB, and LI districts.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll call any proponents. Any proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam President, I originally came up here to oppose this ordinance because the way it's written, it has far-reaching impacts to our residential areas in the city, our neighborhoods. Our RB district comprises probably 80% of our city. I would say to say that almost every city council has a home in the RB district. Allowing townhouses of this density would change the character and the fabric of our neighborhoods in the city, and it would not have any beneficial effects. I did speak to the chairman of the zoning subcommittee, and he's going to be willing to sit down with me and review the proposal, and we'll work it out.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors? Counselor Rattan?
Thank you. To be quite honest with you, I want this to go into committee. I want to work with Frank and hash out some of these issues. And as Frank said, there's far-reaching issues that I want to kind of remove from the process and tweak certain things. And with his help, we'll get them.
Thank you, Counselor Rattan. This will be going to zoning. Any other Counselors? Zoning.
Calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on the application of TA Revere LLC requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council for above-ground storage of 6,020 gallons of gasoline contained within 301 vehicles to be parked in a parking garage at a residential apartment building at 650 Ocean Avenue.
Any proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. This will be going to public safety, but are there any Counselors?
Madam President, if I may.
Counselor.
Madam President, this is down in my district, and I know normally a 148 is a non-issue, but I think this is an opportunity for us to protect our streets from parking on the street where they have parking garages available to them. And this is, in this building here, they have to pay for their parking, if I'm correct, and they still do that way, that they have to pay a monthly fee, and that's why people are parking on Ocean Ave to avoid that. And I think there's a good opportunity for us to address that with the owner, and we see that the owner isn't even here tonight. So I think that's something we got to look at when we talk about it in committee. Thank you.
Absolutely. I hope, I share my sentiment with my colleagues. I hope that the owner does come before us, and I think it's a good opportunity to avoid past mistakes. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. I was looking at this. I have, I don't understand, to the Ward Two Counselor, is it 650 Broad Boulevard? No. 650 Ocean Ave. This is the newer building at 650. They're across the street from the barracks. Oh, I didn't know that was your ward.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Seeing as there are no other Counselors, this will be going to public safety.
Calendar item number eight is the Committee of the Whole report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Committee of the Whole met at 5:00 this evening, and we discussed HYM. We brought up many issues that the council had concerns, such as traffic. We discussed what the plan for the proposal was, and we also allowed time for any questions. It was a very informative presentation. We received more information about the plan as well as the phases of the project, and I encourage any residents that may have missed that part of the meeting to look it up online or look for reruns on Revere TV, as it was very, very informative. I also want to use this opportunity to inform our residents, to ask the council if you have any questions. Reach out to your ward counselor, reach out to your counselor at large. If you have any questions about the project, reach out, you know, we're your resource to help you with this, and we can get the questions to the right people so that we can address everyone's issues. There was no verdict out of the Committee of the Whole. It was simply informative, and I will leave my report at that. Oh, and the public hearing for the HYM will be on November 5 at 6:00 PM. That concludes the report.
Next item on the agenda is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Madam President?
Counselor.
Madam President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met, and we had several issues before us. First was the reappointment of Michael Fixman as a constable. He was approved. Next was the appointment of Camden Construction as a licensed drain layer. They were approved. Next was the appointment of Rapid Flow as a licensed drain layer. They were approved. And we also had the appointment of David Eno as a member of the Conservation Commission. He was approved. Next is the reappointment of Pasquale De Feo as a constable. He was approved. Next was the appointment of Pauline Perrinow to the Commission on Disabilities. She was approved. And finally, we had the appointment of Albert Sheridan to the Commission on Disabilities. He was approved. Madam President, and held upon the city council, we all voted out favorably for this and the inanity to, I ask that we take this all as one vote.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso, and I also want to thank you for allowing us time for the Committee of the Whole meeting during your scheduled committee meeting this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
If there are no objections, we'll take it up all at once. Any objections? Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council confirm the Appointment Subcommittee Report as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito? Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo? Yes, Counselor Rattan? Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Giannino?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number 16, Communication from the Board of Assessors Requesting a Public Hearing for the Purpose of Establishing the Fiscal Year 2019 Tax Rate.
So this will be referred to a public hearing held on November 26.
Calendar item number 17, Motion Presented by Counselors McKenna and Giannino that the mayor identify funding and schedule the resurfacing of Winthrop Avenue from Beach Street to Broadway.
So there was a typo on this. This is actually Counselor Rizzo's motion, so I'll allow Counselor Rizzo to speak. So this is on behalf of Counselor Rizzo. There's a typo.
Madam President, you're more than welcome to be included on the motion. This is actually Counselor McKenna's district, and her and I have worked on this together. It's just a little piece that people have been complaining about. It actually runs down past the senior center, so it is a highly traveled area, and hopefully we can identify some funding, maybe with some Chapter 90 funds next year to get it done.
I'd love to be a part of it with you and Counselor McKenna. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to amend Mills Street off of Beach Street, just the half of Mills Street. They did water work there and gas work there, and they patched it up really poorly, and there's, and that's a heavily traveled street, even though it's, you know, off the beaten path. So I would really like to put that in this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, just as a sidebar to this whole resurfacing thing, I know I have it down in my ward that when they do water work, or when they do gas work, or repairs, or sewer work, that when they do, we want to make sure that all the work is done, the infrastructure work is done before we resurface the street. I know it's, this has been a habit of the city for many years prior to this, and I think we want to make sure that all the infrastructure is done before the streets are resurfaced, and that the Water Department, Engineering Department be on board with all these items to make sure they're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Counselors?
If I may, very briefly, I think that Counselor Novoselsky made a great point. It's a huge issue in the city that National Grid and other companies tear up our streets a year or two after we spend all the money...
a year or two after we spend all the money to repave them. I know it happened a great deal in Counselor Patch's ward. Ward Six has been torn apart. Beautiful new paved roads now have awful divots along the entire side of the road. And we invest so much money into our infrastructure and paving roads and making these improvements, it's a slap in the face when you drive down and a week later, and there's, you know, giant holes in Sergeant Street, or a giant gully along the side of Malden Street. And I'm speaking from Ward Six because I traverse it every day, but there are other parts of the community where this is happening. So to get all of the utilities on board and make sure that we're making the repairs, then investing in paving the roads, it's so, so crucial, because it's painful to the residents to have their streets be torn up, and then even worse, when they finally get a beautiful new street and a year later have it torn up again. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. On the matter of National Grid tearing up the streets, you're right, Counselor Janino. It was a disgrace what they did to Washington Ave and Malden Street, and the streets off of Malden Street. But we did manage to get, for the first time, they did come back, where they just usually do just the trench. They came back and they resurfaced it like a half, we got like a half a street. And we just managed to get Augusta Street, which I tried to get done, because it was such a mess with the regular city repairs of streets. But they forgot, I guess, to do that, to come back. And I guess, you know, we did manage recently with the help of John Squibb and actually 311 Basil Nickerson, we managed to get National Grid down to resurface half the street. And it's much better. Still, I would hope next year that they can do the whole street. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. And I think we share in the concern. There are many streets across our city that they have defaced. Broadway is one of the worst as well. So I look forward to this going. Oops, I opened a can of worms. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, in talking about National Grid not coming back, everybody knows, and I get constant complaints on it, about North Shore Road between Shirley Ave and Revere Beach Parkway. National Grid dug that up, and they won't come back. They weren't going to come back until they finish all their tie-ins, which they still have another three or four months' work to do. And that street is terrible, and they won't, they do plan on resurfacing the streets, but not till after everything is done. So we're talking about, and now that they're on a lockout, we have no clue when they're going to come back. So I agree with everything that's been said here, and we're all disgusted with it.
Thank you, everyone. On the motion. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item 20.
Motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the city council request Dan Cameron from National Grid to appear before a city council subcommittee to discuss measures both the city and residents can take to prepare for winter storms that could cause power outages, and how the city and residents can deal with outages should they occur.
It's a great motion. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The motion essentially speaks for itself. You know, we've obviously had our share of very, very strong winter storms over the last many years. That unfortunately leaves a good chunk of our city oftentimes without power. And I just think that it's time that maybe we get together with National Grid and see if there's things the city could do to better prepare for these storms, whether, I don't know whether it has to do with, you know, maybe making sure all of our transformers are up to speed, or making sure that our place in the power grid is where we should be. Also, so that when residents are impacted, you know, outside of what the city can do, that they're better prepared and understand what they can do as residents to get help, because there's nothing more unnerving for people when they have absolutely no power in their home. And of course, we get the calls, and you try to help as best you can. But I think it'd be good just to educate our residents as to how they can prepare for strong winter storms. And who better to explain that to them, maybe than Dan Cameron, somebody from National Grid? So hopefully, we can get him up here. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Madam President. Great motion. I think it's a great idea. But I just want to bring a couple of things. I don't know what committee you're going to put it in. But when he does come, I would hope that the councilers stick to the issues and don't go branching off into double poles and trenches. Stick to the point, please. That's number one. Number two, we have to think about the city doing work and the customer, meaning our residents, to trim their trees. Now, National Grid will not trim trees on somebody's property going to a house. Neither will the city. So it's up to the city residents to trim the trees on their property around those lines. And also parking. Whenever work is being done on a transformer or a telephone pole, they won't come to a pole if there's a car parked underneath, because they've had incidences where accidentally someone drops a tool on somebody's car, and now they have a lawsuit. So just be aware that that's going to be something that comes up, and that we just stick to the point when we do go have that meeting. And I thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? If I may briefly, and correct me if I'm wrong, I hope I'm staying on the same track. But another huge concern of mine going into the winter months is gas. And our residents serve by National Grid gas, that this whole community is affected by the lockout. I'm concerned, what happens in an emergency if we lose gas? Are our residents protected if there are non-experienced people that are, they're locked-out workers fixing emergencies? I want to know how our community is being protected while their workers are locked out? What does that mean for us? And I hope that by addressing that, we put more pressure on them to end this, because it's not right. And gas is extremely dangerous. If there is a leak, if a home is affected by gas heat, what happens to our seniors if they lose gas for a day or two, or if there is a bad storm or an accident or something happens? So electrical is definitely a huge concern of mine, but National Grid gases as well, especially going into the colder months. As we all remember, last winter was freezing, absolutely freezing cold. And if we run into situations where people lose electricity, gas is affected, a number of different issues. National Grid services both, and I want to make sure our community is protected. And I also want to put some heat on them. No pun intended, but they have to work it out.
Madam President, just quickly, you know, that's something as far as seniors are concerned and disabled, that the city has to be aware and have these emergency locations set up for them to be able to go to. And I think that's something that we have to work on in our emergency management when we do that. And I had a discussion with Dan Cameron last week, as a matter of fact, to talk about leaks and what happens, that there's three grades of leaks, grade one, grade two, and grade three. Grade three is the worst. They will have a crew come in and fix that immediately. Grade two is a borderline. They're coming down and investigating. And a grade one, which is a minor, minor, minor leak, according to Dan, that they take that as a, watch it and see what happens. So they have their, they know their levels that they have to go by. So just so you know, and Dan will explain that when he comes in, I'm sure. So thank you.
Counselor, great point. And on that point, and I never talk, so I'm sorry, guys, but the grades concern me, because there's a level one leak that's been on Washington Ave for years that's not being addressed. And in my opinion, a level one leak that goes on for an extended period of time is equally as bad as a stronger level leak. So I think it should be addressed, and it's something that's really been a concern of mine. Any other councilors? Nope? All right. This will go to public safety.
Calendar item number 21. Motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the Revere Housing Authority to clean up and stripe the deplorable parking lot located at the corner of Wave and Dolphin Avenues. The parking lot for visitors of Liston Towers is currently unusable and unsafe. Repairing the lot will also provide much-needed space for vehicles, which now utilize the sidewalk as a parking area in addition to making it safer for pedestrians.
McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. This speaks for itself, but I just want to say that the lot is a mess. It has debris and garbage in it. It really is. It could be valuable to the people, the residents around there, and the visitors visiting Liston Towers. So I'm asking the mayor to put a little bit of pressure on the Revere Housing Authority and have it cleaned up and striped. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Any other councilors? Sure.
Wayne Rose, 189 Coolidge Street. The Revere Housing Authority seems to be a big problem in this city lately. We have rats eating into our houses that nobody's doing anything about. They could chew on wires and cause fires.
Madam President, point of order.
I think these concerns should be addressed.
Point of order. Point of order. This motion is about striping a lot, not about rats or anything else.
It's about Revere Housing Authority, too.
It's about striping the lot, sir.
Maybe you should do something about the rats in housing.
Thank you. Let's focus on the issue, on the motion. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22. Motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the DCR to restripe Winthrop Parkway along Short Beach. The faded striping for traffic direction and crosswalks is a hazard to the two-way vehicular traffic along the parkway.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. So I've called DCR a couple of times, and nothing has been done. It's a two-way street, Winthrop Parkway, going in and out of Revere Beachmont. And there's no striping. You can't see where you're supposed to be on one side or the other. You can't even take a left turn. It's a narrow, there's a one, it turns into a one-way, one lane, and you can't even see where the striping is. So I'm just asking the mayor to put a little bit of, use his clout to have this redone before the winter comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Any other councilors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 24. Motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor be requested to implement a comprehensive show-and-tell educational program to the residents of the City of Revere on how to use the new trash in recycle bins. A description of what items can be placed in these bins and the date when the program will begin.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. I know that Mayor Arigo has done some of these things already. He's, there's a video on there, and he did attach some items, what you can't throw in and what you can throw in. But I just don't want it to be like a one-week program. We did the recycle. People are throwing, you know, items that shouldn't be put in recycle, the recycle bins. I really think there should be more of an awareness, maybe a campaign. I think we spend all this money for these bins to combat rodents and maybe to curb litter. And I just don't want it to fall on the wayside. I want people to be aware. Maybe we can start programs with Revere High School. The kids, they can receive community services. It's good on their resume. There's just, you know, these are just ideas, but I just don't want it to, after a month, be gone and done with. I just want to say that the trucks, on Tuesday, the trucks delivered these bins, and there are still bins on the sidewalk where they left them. And we have a lot of absentee landlords, and we have tenants, and these tenants don't know, you know? And also, my biggest concern is we do, we have these people that, single-family people that have 20 people in their house, and they give them one bin. Well, where is that extra trash going to go? So these are just concerns, and I want to give kudos to Larry Smith, because he's the one who called me and said, you know, we have to do something. It just can't be this one-week thing. It has to be a continuous thing. We want to clean up Revere. This is the way to do it. We want to get rid of the rats or help get rid of the rats. This is the way to do it. We need captains. We need to monitor it. We don't, not for a week, not for a month. It should be a campaign, and we should be the leaders of this campaign in the city. So this is, I'm sorry it was lengthy, but it was just idea after idea after idea, and talking to Larry, you know, these are the problems that we have with the recycle bin. The other thing I just want to say is I don't think the recycle bin should be every other week, especially during holidays. I think during holidays, I think, you know, if you're a one, I live in a one, a single-family house, and my recycle after two weeks is overflowing. So these are just thoughts. It's not pressure, it's just thoughts, but I would hate to see this program, you know, die after two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I congratulate Counselor McKenna for, again, looking outside the box. But I think this is something that we should be discussing in Public Works, because that's where it belongs, and find out exactly what's going on and what the mayor has on tap for everything, that this is a large project, and it's not something that we can just put out here from the city council without discussing it, you know? And I'm sure there's some items that can be done, some items that may already be being processed and going on. And I think we have to look at it, all aspects. So I request that it go into Public Works.
This will go into Public Works. There are a few more councilors, though. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. I've been getting, first of all, I want to congratulate Counselor McKenna on this motion. It's a great motion. But I've been getting, in my ward, I don't know if the other ward counselors, getting phone calls and emails concerning these new, the trash barrels that they started to give I've been trying to get the information. It's changed several times about, the main complaint is that people like myself, who went out, who spent $80 on a barrel with the lid, it's like a regular recycling barrel. A lot of people went out and bought these expensive barrels. And they want to know what they, why they can't use them, and, you know, and they're quite upset about it. And again, what's happening here is the people that actually take care of their trash are getting punished again for spending the money for a real decent barrel and rats, you know, for rat protection. And they're going to, they're going to be stuck with the barrels. But what I understand is it's, policies keep changing. Now, they changed, at first, they weren't going to use, they were going to take the old barrels away. You could throw them out. But now, correct me if I'm wrong, councilors, but I think the policy is that six weeks in a year, people are going to be allowed to use these barrels along with the ones the city give them. Also, I think the cost of the barrel, the second barrel, if you want to add a barrel, came down. At first, it was like over $100 or something, but I think it's down to, is it 50 or 75?
Counselor Patch, I think we should maybe have the mayor's office come before us and answer all these questions, because I'm afraid if we start throwing around numbers and we don't have all the set data.
Well, that's why, why don't we have?
I agree. But I think that we should have a representative address us with numbers and facts, because I don't want to start throwing numbers out there and then have them say, well, the council said it's this or it's that.
Well, some people know, and some people don't know. And I think as a Ward Six counselor, I should know, I should be able to answer these questions when people call me or email them back with answers. Makes me look like a fool. So that's why, you know, we should get a little better communication here on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. This is not going to stop this. Plain and simple. This will not stop this. The plastic barrels are not going to defeat the rodents. I've seen numerous barrels eaten in various places by these rodents, the side, the top, the middle. They can practically chew through metal. So I don't know what's going to happen. We gave him the ability to, you know, go on this trial, but what I really want to know is, when did we authorize the money out of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund? Because I'm told that's where this money comes from for this. I don't remember ever giving an authorization for that. I don't remember ever giving an authorization for that $900,000. Does anybody up here remember that? Do you? When was it? That's what I'm trying to figure. Was this in June, right?
I think that was $150,000, that was it, wasn't barrels.
So my point is, is since then, we really haven't had much transparency, you know? That's one of the issues, we've been pretty much left in the dock. And, you know, we get this and maybe a program. So there's gotta be better communication. I'd like to also find out what grant money that he actually used and from where, and what was the purpose of the grant? And several of this, these issues are really troubling, because since then, we've been pretty much in the dock. And thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo, then Counselor Zimbardo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I, you know, I just want to echo the sentiments of Counselor Patch. You know, and I, you know, I share his frustration, you know? You hear things through the grapevine, but you don't really know. It's just another, it's just another situation where the city council has to dig for information. You know, there's no, I mean, unless, you know, like Counselor Rotundo held this up, I mean, this is about as much information about the new trash barrel program as I, as I know. Otherwise, I suppose I could dig onto the website and try to figure it out. It just doesn't make sense to me to have a program like this that's gonna impact literally every single residential resident and not have a complete rollout. The next thing we know, we talk about, we have a rodent problem and, you know, that we're allowing $150,000 to be spent on pest control. I think there was talk of a barrel program, although at that time, I remember they were talking about grant money. Come to find out, apparently, the money was taken out of, whether it's the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund or another fund, I don't know the dollar amount. If somebody knows they're here on the council, it would only be because they're privy to it. It wasn't told to us here at a meeting. It just, you know, I mean, people, I'm getting calls, and quite honestly, I'm referring them to 311. I'm telling them, call 311, because I can't, I can't answer the question. This should have been a series of meetings, not, you know, not just a knee-jerk reaction to a problem, spend $900,000 to $1 million on barrels and say, hey, good luck, you gotta use this now or you're getting fined. And we don't know, is it 75 a barrel, 150 a barrel, can you use your own barrels? I mean, people, people are upset over this. And we should have had a better understanding, so at least we can explain to the residents. So I'm in full, I'm in full sync with what a lot of counselors have said here tonight about this program. We all want the rat problem to go away. Nobody wants to see the city of Revere on the news because we're overrun with rats. I want to be, I want to be fully engaged in trying to get rid of this problem. But to roll out a program like this where our municipal leaders can't answer questions is just, it's just, it's unacceptable to me. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. Counselor Zimbardo.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't know I needed to bring props here tonight, but next time I'll, next time I'll know that. Listen.
You can bring your dog.
I could do that.
They do kill rats.
I don't have rats, because I have dogs, but that's another story. You know, I don't know whether the barrel program is gonna solve our rodent problem, but I do know that it's gonna keep the trash bags off the street. Now, that may not be a total fix, but it's a step in the right direction. To not allow trash bags on the sidewalk is gonna prevent some of these rodents, because we all know, if you see a rat, it's within 50 feet of its food source. So if you keep, and I know that, you know, in New York City, the rodents eat through anything. So I think we're heading in the right direction. Now, these other questions about the money and all that, I want to know all about that. Let's, you know, let's have a meeting in Public Works and bring, and get all the facts on the table, where everything's coming from. I was assuming this was grant money, but I should never assume. But the bottom line is, I'm happy that we're at least heading in a direction where we're gonna keep these trash bags off the sidewalk. So it's, it may not solve the whole thing, but maybe between that and debating and the money we're spending on pest control is gonna, is hopefully get us out of the jam we're in now. But as far as who, where this money is coming from, we need to know all of this stuff. So whatever appropriate committee, I hope you'll send it to Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Everyone's raising their hand. I'm gonna go to Counsel Ganaso, Counsel Nowosowski, then Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. I know this is a very concerning issue before our constituents and ourselves. But as we're debating this and getting all this conversation going, the ceiling up above has fallen on my head. And I think we should do something like that to preserve the, I have to make sure my Red Sox are protecting me. A piece of the ceiling just fell down on my head. And I'm hoping that maybe...
That's good luck, Arthur, stay there. It's good luck.
Oh, I don't want that. Maybe when we get some sort of resolution of the rodent problem, we can go up and spend a few bucks on the ceiling, because, and I think this is a very serious issue. I've got some concern. I represent a lot of elderly. And one particular elderly woman called me this weekend, Sunday morning, by the way, concerned about her trash bin that she just received. And she thought it was too big for her to handle. Now, bear in mind, I had to somewhat take back my conversation I was gonna have with her, because my initial reaction is, couldn't just wait until Monday. But my first thought would be, look, for God's sakes, we're trying to correct the situation here. We have a very serious problem. As does Waltham, as does Beverly, as does Belmont, all these affluent cities. It's not only isolated to the city of Revere, but we're doing something about it. And as far as these, and I appreciate Charlie's concern, I bought new barrels. But there are people who can't afford that. And so in place of that, we as neighbors probably have to say, okay, we bite the barrel and put it aside. I put mine in the companion and I just left it there. And at least the people who couldn't afford these new barrels now have something in place that they can use. And as far as absentee landlords, it's a very simple process that we have, we have our inspection services go out, traverse this community. All it's gonna take is a couple of weeks, and we can get these violators. I mean, this is not a big issue here. This is a very simple issue. Concentrate on one thing. Correct this rodent problem and how we best address it. This is a simple problem, a way to present our issues, correct our problems. But then we add to that, and we add to whatever we have to do to make sure, because I am frightened of rodents. This big, and I would run a mile, and my wife would sell the house overnight. So I'm no hero when it comes to rodents. But please, give us a chance as a community to make the program work and see, let's all work together and see how best we can correct it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Again, colleagues, this will be going to the Public Works. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, thank you for the levity and latitude to speak again. But, you know, it just overwhelms me that when we appropriated the money for these barrels, the superintendent of Public Works stood at that podium and explained a lot of these issues that are being brought up. We've been dealing with the rodent problem for a year or two. And we are the ones that were screaming for someone to do something. The mayor decided that new barrels, that everybody that had the new barrels would be consistent and that the trash wouldn't be thrown all over the place. I have a lot of apartment buildings in my tenements in my neighborhood that have six units and only five barrels of their own. But now they're gonna get an extra, and they're gonna have six, so all the bags that they throw on top of the five will be able to overflow into the sixth barrel. We have to give this program some time, folks. It's only been in operation for a week. Yes, there are barrels still out there and that are on sidewalks. And, you know, it just annoys me that, you know, childish will go everywhere. You know, but this is something what we've been talking about. We came up with a partial solution. It's not a total solution. The mayor is doing his job. He's trying to do his job without getting interrupted and questions. A simple phone call to 311 will answer almost every question, almost every question. Do it, folks. Be patient. It'll work. Public Works, please.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm forgetting people. Counselor Powers, then Counselor Rizzo, and then again, please, Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President. On two occasions during the past week, I saw in City Hall probably a dozen or two city employees from different departments putting some time in and stuffing plastic bags, which were later on attached to the trash barrels. As a matter of fact, I received two blue trash barrels, and both of them had a plastic bag with probably two or four pages of instructions with regard to how to use the barrel, what the extra barrel was gonna cost, how many barrels you could get, a whole nine yards. Myself personally, I'm happy with the program. I think it's gonna solve a lot of problems. How many times do you drive up and down the street, as Counselor Nowosowski alluded to, and see two or three trash bags, flimsy ones at that, sitting on the sidewalk or sitting behind a, sitting on top of a barrel? It's, personally, I think we're moving in the right direction with regard to trash. We're confining it to areas. It's like going into a restaurant. If they don't have any food, you're not gonna go back there. And that's probably what's happening with the rodents or will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, everyone, this is going to Public Works. Counselor Rizzo, followed by Counselor Rotundo.
Totally understood, Madam President. This is going to Public Works. But some things have been said that are just so out of line. We, first of all, the funding for these barrels was absolutely never discussed. Now, that's one of our duties up here, to understand where funding comes from. Never discussed. And if it has been, somebody tell me when, and when it was appropriate and when it was authorized. We talked about fixing the rat problem, of course we did. And I believe that we should go to a barrel program, but this was just done, knee-jerk reaction like that. I heard at least four or five counselors up here right now that said they already had barrels. Why are we spending money on barrels if we already have them? You know, to me, in some respects, this is almost a backdoor into a trash fee. Because now, if I got two barrels, guess what? I got a single-family home, I can only have one. Or I gotta pay for another one, despite the fact I already have two barrels. I mean, if you want to implement a program, work something out with Lowe's or Home Depot and say, hey, if you're using trash bags now, you gotta go buy a barrel. And we're gonna work a fee out for you, so you go buy them. So those of us that have barrels don't have to just throw them away or leave them in our backyards, we can still use the same barrels that we had, because we've had them. It just doesn't make sense to me, you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater to say, hey, those of you that just bought barrels or have good barrels that have been working for you, tough luck. We're gonna go out and spend X number of dollars on new barrels, and you're gonna have this barrel, and tough luck, suck it up. You know, I just think that was the wrong way to go about it, and there was never a discussion. I'm glad they were stuffing bags and putting them on barrels so residents could tear them off and read them. But I know Counselor Patch and I, and it sounds like Counselor Rotundo, were completely not, I mean, we were as in the dock as the residents. I mean, they should have taken one of these four pages of whatever they were stuffing in the bags and maybe dropped them off at our houses, so we could understand what the program entailed. The only thing I got was this, and that is unfortunate, because we should know what's going on in this city. This isn't about whether we should have barrels or not. Of course, I believe, I believe in the barrel program, that's great. But if you've got half the city that already has barrels, what are we spending all this money for to buy everybody barrels? We already had them. To me, it just makes no sense, and it's a backdoor into a trash fee. That's how I'm looking at it. And that's a whole nother issue. The rat problem we'll address with barrels. No more trash bags on the ground. I agree. Well, I'm in full agreement on that. The way it was, the way it was gone about, I disagree with. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Rotundo, followed by Counselor Patch, followed by committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Everybody that has a trash barrel, go home and take a look at it. You will see a barcode on it. And on that barcode, it goes to the truck. And the truck will, from what I was told by several residents, if you do not comply, you will get a ticket, a little warning. So as Counselor Rizzo had just alluded to, this is just one step away from a trash fee. What's in place right now is the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. So you have the bank account for it, and you have the revolving fund. Now you have a compliance part of it, where you have the barcode system, and you have to use a particular barrel, one that's ineffective. And more importantly, you have a system that penalizes people for not doing it appropriately. I've had people on the lineway, as well as other parts of the city, complain to me that they did not have their trash picked up, because they were told that they were not in compliance. And that's, that's a huge issue. More importantly, you now have a cat, pretty much 20,000 homeowners in this city that have trash barrels that they paid good money for, that are no longer useful to them. And that's a problem, too.
I'll be real quick, because I heard stuff that I can't remember. I can remember the superintendent being up there, but not, first of all, I want to tell the mayor that I, I'm definitely for these barrels. I wasn't complaining about the barrels. But I haven't got a barrel yet, so I didn't get the little goody bag with all the, all the descriptions on it. All I wanted, all I was complaining about was I didn't have any information, well, I was getting it through the grapevine, here or there. But I mean, again, it's, the problem, the problem with the barrels is that you're still gonna have people out there to throw out the trash. It's gotta be enforced by the inspection services. That is the biggest problem that we have. And I just want to, you know, say that we were never told here about any instructions about how to use the barrels. Thank you.
Pat Malkiano, Sagamaw Street. I love the idea of the barrels. I like the uniformity, I like all that kind of stuff. But again, I think that it should have gone to City Council. I think there should have been feedback. There's 1,000,000,000 questions on Facebook, and people get crazy. And again, city councilors don't know anything about it, and you guys look like dummies again, just like when you didn't know anything about, we had to tell you about the guy that got fired, remember? You guys didn't know anything about it, we had to tell you. And again, you didn't know anything about this. And it's too bad that you don't know anything about it. Like you had to get the paperwork and all that kind of stuff. It just should have been done better. I like the idea of it, but there just isn't enough information, and it just should have been done a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't gonna speak on this, but since everyone else had about an hour, if I may very briefly, I can 110% see both sides to this. I think that the mayor's office had every good intention in mind when putting this program forward. It was an effort to combat an issue that we're all concerned about. But I think that putting instructions on a trash barrel is like buying a dresser at IKEA. No one's gonna read the instructions. And that's the reality of it. So there's a great amount of literature out there. But the problem is, to Counselor McKenna's point, we need some sort of program to get it out there. No one's gonna read the instructions, and I think that's a problem that we're facing. I think that there are a lot of things that we can talk about in this program, Counselor McKenna, and I think that you have a lot of foresight with this motion. I think that people don't know how to recycle. You may think you do, but there are things that can be recycled, there are things that cannot be recycled. And as we spoke about in a previous meeting, the rate for recycling right now is volatile. It's changing constantly. So we want to make sure that our residents are well-educated on recycling and what can and can't be. I have a lot of thoughts on this, so I'm gonna save them for committee, but I see both sides to this. I understand people's frustration. There are a lot of residents that were doing the right thing and had the right barrels, but unfortunately, there were a lot of people that were not. And a lot of them were absentee landlords in other situations and people that couldn't afford barrels. So I think that we're moving in the right direction, and I think that this is a great opportunity that as a council, we can use our position to educate... opportunity that as a council, we can use our position to educate people and to get the instructions out there and communicate with our constituents. So I think this should go to Public Works, and we can go into it a little bit further and perhaps even make a subcommittee where we can help to educate the general public on it. Thank you.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor request the police chief, fire chief, or city director to appear before the city council to discuss ongoing efforts regarding the opioid crisis.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. This again goes to the issue of a quarterly report, in particular regarding crime, but more importantly, as to what we're doing between the various bodies of government to help with the opiate crisis. I'd like some real definitive information, and Madam President, if we could have it during the council time, unfortunately, sometimes between work and life, having them come up at 5:00 in the afternoon is very difficult for me to address at times, and if you could provide that leniency, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. We can vote on this and figure out a time for them to come before the council. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor update the city council on the disposition of the state audit previously requested by the city council.
Madam President, I'm actually just waiting for him to send a response back as to whether or not he's engaged the state auditor, and as has been done in the past with Tom Ambrosino, former mayor, is he would engage the state, and the state would then respond back as to what it is that we're looking for. And then that's when I would present to the mayor and this body exactly what it is that we'd be looking for. A perfect example would be looking at the various grant monies that have been used, both for the police, or for that matter, for the enterprise fund, or for that matter, regarding the solid waste fund, and seeing if they've been obtained appropriately, distributed appropriately, and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors?
If I may provide a brief update on that, the mayor and I met with some representative from the state auditor's office. They are going to be sending some communication forward to the council. We discussed the concerns of the council. I voiced the opinion of the council and kind of what's happening with it. The state's office was very cooperative. We had a very productive meeting, and they'll be sending information to the mayor to present to the council.
Madam President, as has been done in the past, I'd like to get the letter that the mayor sent to the auditor and that communication back from the auditor.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Late motions? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Late motion presented by Counselor Patch, that the mayor request the traffic commission to extend the hours for commercial vehicle parking until 12:00 a.m. in the business district areas where restaurants are located, such as Broadway, Revere Street, and Shirley Ave, so that individuals with commercial plates are able to patronize establishments without being issued a violation.
Counselor?
Thank you. It actually speaks for itself, but I was made aware of this by a Revere business owner that went into a restaurant on Broadway and parked and came out after 8:00, and he had a $50 ticket on his pickup truck. There's, I also, I checked with the parking director, and this is, I guess this has been a problem at several other places, also pertaining mostly to Revere business owners that frequent these Revere restaurants. I don't think it would hurt to just push the hours back on the main streets, just so that this doesn't occur again. Thank you.
Any other councilors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
There's one late communication from the retirement board requesting acceptance of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32, Section 20, Subsection 6, relative to retirement board member compensation.
So I don't believe there's anyone here to speak on this. Do any councilors have any questions? We can send this to Legislative Affairs or Ways and Means? Ways and Means? Ways and Means. There's no further business? We'll end this note congratulating the Red Sox on their World Series. We'll look forward to a parade on Wednesday in the city of Boston. This city council is adjourned until November 5th. Madam Clerk, do we have any subcommittee on November 5th? We have a zoning subcommittee at 5:30, and at this time, I don't believe there are any other subcommittees scheduled, so this council will be adjourned until November 5th. Thank you, everyone, and a happy and safe Halloween.